The Leominster City Council meeting is funded in part by DeCarulous Insurance Agency at www.decarolousinsuranceagency.com.
He's welcome.
I can't hear, I can't smell today.
Good evening. It's 6:30, so we'll start. This is a joint meeting of the Conservation Commission and the City Council pursuant to Charter Provision 5.6. And the purpose of it is sort of a review or an update so that you can inform the City Council as to the activities of the Conservation Commission over the last year. So Angela, if you could give us an overview, I know I provided you with a bit of a syllabus, significant items that have occurred during the past year, any particular issues that are pending before the Conservation Commission of special interest, or other issues that you would like to highlight for us, you may proceed.
Thank you very much. So over the past 12 months since August of 2020, the-
Angela, could you check your microphone, please?
No, I'm sorry. Is that better?
Yes.
A little different. So since August of 2020, the Conservation Commission has approved 13 RDAs. They've done 26 Notice of Intent, which result in Orders of Conditions, and that does include amended orders as well. They've issued 17 Certificates of Compliance, closing out old orders and recent ones. And we've had 16 official enforcements, as well as 33 verbal and cease and desists. Anything of sig- the really only significant issue for the Commission right now is more of administrative issue, is we do not have a full board. We currently have four members, and we're a seven-member board. So it is, does create quorum issues for us at times if someone's sick, or if they have a family emergency. And that's, that's our main issue. And I have my notes here from your syllabus.
Okay, no problem.
Currently, the goals for the Commission is, the main goal is to fill our Commission up, so we have a seven-member board. I currently have one member who's pregnant and another one who just had a baby and was planning on taking some time off to spend with his family, but has decided not to, to make sure that we have a quorum. And that's my main goal. And then I'm also working on setting up a paid internship and/or a summer clerk position, a part-time clerk, just to help out in the office. It does become very overwhelming in the summertime when I'm out in the field, taking, you know, with all the roadwork and construction, sometimes it takes me, you know, four hours to do three site inspections, just getting around town. And I also am trying to set up a digital system for the entire Conservation Commission file room. Over the past 30 years, the Conservation Commission office has kind of moved around a lot, and so I've been spending a lot of time locating files with help of DPW and the Planning Board and the ZBA and Caitlin, you know, helping me look in the safes and all the different places these files have been stashed. And I think I've finally got them all.
Good.
And I've been working on reorganizing and putting things back where they belong, separating out the old files and relabeling them by street address and DEP file number and separating the permits, so it's not one big file, it'll be several smaller files. If we're able to digitize this, it would make it a lot easier for the public to have access to these, as well as it would take a lot of clerical work off the table because it'd be very easy for me to submit someone, they ask me a question, I'll be able to answer immediately, rather than give them, you know, five or six days to go through all the files and scan it all in. The objectives from the Commission for the Wetland Protection Act are the protection of public and private water supply, the protection of groundwater supply, flood control, storm damage and prevention, protection of land-contained shellfish, which we definitely have in Leominster, prevention of pollution, protection of fisheries, and protection of wildlife habitat. I would like to add education and community outreach to our objectives over the next few years, as I think it's really important and it creates a community involvement in conservation, which I think is lacking in some ways in Leominster. A lot of people don't understand what the Conservation Commission is and what our job is, and it's not just to stop development, it's to help development, to help homeowners really take care of their land for the betterment of their own future. I'd like to create that relationship with the community. And as I said, really the only, you know, the matter that's really significant and critical right now isn't, you know, setting up and staffing the board to full capacity just so we don't have any issues with quorum. It does become very difficult when we cancel meetings and we have to reschedule a special meeting, even with four members, it does, it's a lot of trouble for us. And it creates a lot of stress on the current members to always be present.
Okay. Thank you for that overview, it's much appreciated. I would open this up to the Council for questions. Councilor Angelini?
Thank you, Mr. President. Angela, let me stop by, when you went through your list of how many requests for the termination of that liability we've had and so on and so forth, it resulted notice of intent generally. So the fee structure, still operate with DEP and off the lockbox for wetland filing fees?
Yes, we have our wetland fund, yes.
Okay, do you have, I mean, I'm not going to ask you for the exact number, but do you know what the revenue, total revenue was from those filing fees for the Commission last year?
Last year, it has changed, I have gotten a couple more permits, but I want to, if I'm remembering correctly, it was $75,000 and some change.
Okay. Terrific. Now, I only have a couple more. So, I don't know, several months ago you came down and we know that FEMA is revisiting flood plain. So when those revised FEMA panels come in, right? We, how involved will you be in adding the data layer to the GIS mapping system?
I'll be involved as much as my technical abilities allow me to be. I really want to be involved with it. I've been working at DPW and FEMA, I've been going to all the meetings. I'm not very good at computers, it's not my strong suit, but-
I understand.
I want to make sure that I'm involved with it because it does affect my board and my permitting quite a bit.
Okay. And one last question, I say a tough one for last. And if you don't want to answer, it's fine, but I know a lot of communities have adopted wetlands bylaws, and, I mean, years ago there was a brief discussion about it here. How do you feel about that? Is that something that you think would be helpful to you, or is it something that would add additional burdens to your schedule?
I think it'd be very helpful in regards to protecting wildlife habitat and protecting the environment. I do think it would be a very large undertaking due to the fact that we're a city, we're very urban, but we're also suburban, so there's a lot of different variables to take into play. It's not like we're, it's not Boston where it's very obvious where the waterways are, and some things should apply to some areas. In Leominster, you know, we have farming, we have, we have downtown rivers, we have downtown streams, we have wetlands up in the mount, you know, up in the hills. So I think it is something that could be done, but I think it really should be done with a lot of care and a lot of time should be dedicated to it to make sure that we're not holding up development and we're actually just protecting the environment and not adding extra burden to homeowners.
I mean, I know that under the stormwater, the new stormwater regulations, that's going to add a considerable amount of work, I would think, for you. So I wish you the best of luck going forward, and that's it. No further questions, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Angelini. I had Councilor Cormier, Pauline Cormier, next, and Councilor Shalfo, I'll get you right after.
Hey Angela, I was just wondering, what, what's your criteria for a member on the Committee?
My main criteria is to have, you know, positive outlook. That's the most important part, because you are working with the community, a lot of times our enforcements-
Angela, could you just plug your microphone? I'm missing half of what you're saying.
I don't want to yell. I think, you know, the most important thing is to have a positive attitude and to have good intentions. The second thing would be to the willingness to learn, because that's the hardest part, is learning all the regulations, even I didn't know all the regulations when I started working for the city. And the third would be to have somewhat of a knowledge of the Wetland Protection Act. It's not required. Some of my best Commissioners had no experience with the Wetland Protection Act, but they were willing to go to the trainings, they were willing to work, you know, to read about things and ask questions, and they weren't shy about, you know, not knowing something, which I think is really important.
So they don't necessarily need a background in it, but although it would be helpful. Okay, and then who would they, how would they contact you if they were interested?
They could call me, or stop by the office, or they could send me an email, whatever they prefer. It's a little hard in the summertime because I'm kind of in and out of the office a lot. But whatever they prefer, I, you know, I'll spend hours talking to them on the phone.
Okay.
Right check?
Correct.
Thank you. Nothing further, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yep, thank you very much. Thanks very much for, you know, joining us this evening. So Angela, just in terms of staffing, do you, do you have any help? Do you have any assistance, or are you just the only person in the Conservation Office?
I'm the only person.
You're the only person? You don't have any administrative support? You don't have any, there's nobody on the Commission Board that helps with, you know, just minutes and administrative kinds of things?
Yeah, I do have someone who, actually, I have one person that does my meeting minutes for me.
Okay.
And they submit it to me, I review it, and then I submit it to the Commission, and then they review and approve it. Other than that, it's really myself and, you know, whoever at City Hall can lend a hand here and there.
Okay. That, I mean, that sounds like an awful lot of work for one person, you know, seven board commission, it just, because they're very detailed and complicated issues and problems that you, they're not problems, but that, you know, challenges that you, you need to sort through. Just a follow-up, and actually to Councilor Cormier's question. Have you been able, probably, you know, I mean, I don't know, but have you been able to do any kind of outreach or advertising, looking for people that have environmental concerns, or environmental, not even concerns, but an environmental background or an interest in the environment? I would think it's such a hot topic these days that we would be able to attract people to the board, to the Commission.
Yeah, we have had a couple people reach out to me, and they were interested in joining the Commission. But the process to get on the board, obviously, is, you know, is a little, it's detailed and it's thorough, so we're still kind of working through it. But I've done, I did a poster, Nikki Peters helped me design a poster that we posted at the library, we posted it on the City Facebook pages, Mayor Mazarello posted on his personal Facebook page. I don't personally use Facebook anymore, so I don't have any sort of social media outreach. But I've also been reaching out to community colleges, asking different professors that I know there, as well as the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissioners as well, I've been working with them. And I have a couple peers at DEP that have helped as well. Actually, one of my Commissioners works with someone at DEP's husband, that's how he heard about it. So I've been trying.
No, I'm sure you have been trying, I'm just wondering if there's any way that the City can assist, or if any, you know, we can assist, just to get the word out, because I know that people are concerned about the environment, and I would think that that would be, you know, of interest.
Councilor, I was going to raise my hand, but-
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry Chuck.
If, if I may, actually. This thing on, it sounds like, okay, thank you. Chuck Raymond, a member of the Conservation Commission. I think I've been a member for about a year now, I do believe. Thank you for appointing me, by the way. I happened to find out about the position, I think I was on the City's website, I think I was looking up the Times for the Recycling Center over in Pittsburgh, and I happened to see the notice, and I was on a conserva-, I've been on, this is actually my third Conservation Commission that I've been on, so when I saw the, the notice on the website, I contacted the, sent my, an email in pretty quickly. But I think I might be an outlier, I, my guess is not too many people are, of, of my background are looking at the City's website for such a position. So I, I think, I speak for myself anyway, but hopefully as for the rest of the Commission, that anything that Angela and the City Council and whoever else might be involved can do it to help get more members, because it's, yeah, having four people is, is, in most cases it's okay, but as you said, our, our Chairperson is pregnant and is doing, I think she's in her third trimester.
Yeah, she's in her-
So she'll be, she'll be on leave soon, and, and with another Commissioner with a new baby, it gets, it gets tough, and there's a lot of pressure to make sure that we're all there every, every meeting. And, you know, life happens, that there's, so there will be times where we're not available. So we're fully in favor of, of more members, and whatever Angela and anybody else can do to get more people on the, on the Commission, I think it's a very important issue.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Shalfo Zephyr. Anybody else? Claire? Councilor Frida?
Yeah, I happen to take a different viewpoint. I kind of think the Conservation Commission is a pretty important Commission to have. There are a lot of things going on in the community, stormwater management is, is one, and we're not even close to seeing the end result of that, we haven't even seen the beginning of it. I think it's important to have people with backgrounds on the Commission. You know, for many years, the Councilor from Ward Five was on the Commission, and there, there were people that were environmentalists, there were, there were active people in the community that had the knowledge of, of what needed to be done and following the Wetland Protection Act. Wetland Protection Act can be learnt, I mean, you can learn that, but to, to notice the, the difficulty in the land structure when you go out to the property, when somebody wants to do something, is a whole different, different ballgame. You know, at one time there were, there was a healthy Commission of environmental scientists, environmental engineers, and it, it was a good balance of everybody having a little piece of, of what was necessary when somebody would come in. We're in an age where, when people come to a city, it's not putting up a fence and, and having somebody next door say, "Yeah, I agree with that, let, you know, I'll come and support you." People are coming in with engineers now, and with attorneys, and with architects, and if they can't rely on their city to be able to have a meeting, to provide information to what they need to do, or have it canceled a half hour before the meetings do happen because of a lack of a quorum, that gets very expensive for that, that person coming in. And, you know, maybe we need to step up. This is, I'm disappointed tonight, to be honest, because this is supposed to be the beginning of meetings with the boards and commissions. And Angela, we know you do a great job there, but it's not with the department heads and it's not with the employees, it's with the boards and commissions. So it would have, you know, I'd be curious, what's happening on, on site walks? What, who's going out for site walks and doing some of the inspections with you? Is anybody from the Commission doing those?
I have a few members, I have two members really that contribute to those. Chuck is one of them, he's usually always available and always there, and then before the third trimester, Amanda, my Chairwoman, she was always available for site walks. But typically, it's usually just me on most inspections. For new permits, I do, the Commission will come out with me if it's something that they need to see.
I mean, for this meeting, I was looking to see the last set of minutes, and I think back in March, I think, or maybe the beginning of April, but they, they're not updated. And I don't know how, you can't do everything, but, and I appreciate that, it's not, it's not you, but I think, I haven't been watching it, but, you know, we, I was, I am part of the Police Station Committee, and it was difficult to just get that passed so that we could move to the next level to get a meeting. So I, I think, you know, I think whether we all need to pitch in and try to find somebody that's qualified to, see if they can apply, but I think, I think we need to get people that can show up at the meeting. And I appreciate the fact, I mean, we're 43,000 people in the community. I'd be hard pressed to think we can't find people to serve on the Committees, you know, with, and there's a lot of environmental people in the community as well. I mean, we just need to tap them and, and ask them to help. I mean, we need to, the citizens deserve that when they come into the Committee and the Boards and Commissions, and that, that goes for all, not just, not just Conservation, it goes for all of them. And I think that's probably why this is in the Charter, that we meet, you know, every two years, or within two years, you know, with the Boards and Commissions, because it's, it is important. So, you know, I, I just have a different perspective, that I think we need to have somebody qualified on these Commissions as well, not, not just somebody to learn.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yeah, thank you very much. I don't think there's anybody here, and I won't speak for any of the Councilors, but I certainly understand the tremendous importance of the Conservation Commission, it's a very important role in the community. You know, you're protecting our water supply, making sure that people build appropriately, you know, when they do build their water supplies, watching out for, you know, homeowners for the city. I think it's a very, very important job. And finding volunteers and finding, you know, specially skilled volunteers that would be appropriate for the Conservation Commission is no small task, it's a huge challenge. Finding volunteers, after being home in a pandemic for the last 18 months and coming out of it, I mean, I work in a business that we, we rely heavily on volunteers, and it's a completely different story. It's very hard to get people to volunteer. I hope it changes, I think now that people are, you know, coming out and hopefully life is going to return to normal. So I understand the challenge, I, I'm trying to understand the challenge, and I'm really empathetic, because I know it's really hard, and you have, you know, you're looking for people with a certain skillset, so anything, you know, that I can do as an individual to help, you know, and support you in that, I would absolutely work with my Conservation-minded Ward Five Counsel across from me, because he does have the background in it, maybe we can put our heads together and just, I don't know, brainstorm to see what we can do to do some outreach for you. But I know you're working really hard, I know that the Commission is doing a, you know, a very good job. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Dombrowski, did I see your hand?
Yeah, I just, am I on? There we go. Just as, as the Chair of Legal Affairs, we've had a lot of amendments and upgrades to a lot of the Conservation Regulations, particularly with the, with the storm drainage. And I just wanted to thank you for your summaries and your detailed analysis, because it was very, it was well-written and it was very helpful. So I probably saved us a lot of long hours, so I just wanted to make sure I thanked you for that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Angelini?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick follow-up. First of all, Mr. Raymond, I, we've never met, but I know we interviewed on the phone when you-
Yes, sir.
And after reviewing your resume, I must confess, I've never seen a resume as packed as yours is, so you are more than, obviously more than qualified.
Is that a good thing?
And I, absolutely, but I wouldn't want to scare anybody away by saying, you know, that they have to have a resume that mirrors yours to participate, because as Angela said, I mean, the Conservation Commission statewide offers, generally at Holy Cross annually, they have a wonderful symposium where people can get friendly and get familiar, and the folks that put on these, these symposiums are extremely friendly and knowledgeable, and you make some great contacts as well when you participate in those. Secondly, once, one area that I know we've been successful with in the past at finding members was posting something at the Leominster Sportsman's Club. As a result of doing that years ago, we ended up with a biology professor at Pittsburgh State, and he was wonderful, he was a wonderful member. He's passed away since, but he was a great guy. And lastly, as I know you and I spoke recently via email, we exchanged emails about stewardship, right, where there's some grant money available, and we were going to target a Conservation Commission property on Hill Street. So those are the kind of things that I think you would find this Council supportive of. Again, I can't speak to the entire Council, but be my experience to figure, you would have support there, I know you heard from some, some other folks as well. So I'd like to echo what was said earlier, so if anything we can do to help facilitate that, to try to, you know, find you some additional folks, we'll start post haste, I know, I know I will. So thank you both for your service in the community, appreciate it very much.
Any other Counselor? Okay, well-
May I, can you just, one last thing? Thank you. I think it was Councilor Frida, I think, mentioned doing site visits, and I thank Angela for giving me a shout-out, I feel like it was unwarranted, I've been, I've been to as many as I can, but remember the Council, with the, the Commission members, we're all, we all have day jobs, so we get to as many as we can. But it's, it's difficult, it's difficult to get out, you know, Angela asked, you know, can you be there 2:00 on Thursday? No. I simply can't. So we get to as many as we can to, to be able to, for lack of a better term, pass judgment when, 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 when the applicants come in front of us. But so, but we do rely mo-, a lot on Angela's expertise, you know, we've got a decent working knowledge of the Wetland Protection Act, but we're not, I'm not a wetland scientist. Even though you say I've got a packed resume, I'm certainly not a professional wetland scientist. So we do what we can, we get as, get to as many sites as we can, but we, we do, we do rely mostly on the paperwork and also on Angela's expertise.
And you have a background-
I've been in the environmental industry, yeah, for-
Right.
-30 years now, but I've never, as a practicing professional, I've been in sales, marketing, and business development, so-
But, but you have, you have the background.
I do, but I'm also a forestry major in college, so I do have a background, but again, I'm not a wetland scientist, I've never taken any wetland course, wetland courses per se, so most of it's, it's just on, you know, trying to be a sponge as much as possible and absorb, absorb the, absorb the knowledge as I go.
Well, thank you for coming down, it's obviously established one clear thing, and that is, is a critical need for Commissioners here in the City, it's really a crisis to some degree, at least. So hopefully this meeting, and it's, you know, being carried on local access television, will prompt someone to come forward that wants to volunteer, and they can contact you Angela, or at the Conservation Commission office, or the Mayor's office, who is the Appointing Authority. If they'd like to volunteer, we certainly could use the help. And I appreciate you coming down this evening, both of you, and we all will have a different view of sort of rolling up our sleeves and putting on our thinking caps to see if we can find some people that would potentially be good Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Frida, we have a few minutes, if you want to start at least the interview. Sure.
Eileen Ramston in the audience?
Yes.
Some of your colleagues want to come with you? There's support from your emergency management team? First, would you just introduce the, the people that are with you?
This is Valerie, she is Deputy Director at OEM, and this is Paul Brennan, this is her husband, and I work for both of them.
All right, thank you. Now, if you introduce yourself, and what, what we're going to do is start, but at 7:00 by law, we have to take a break, and the President will start the meeting, and then we'll come back to the remainder.
Okay.
So if you want to just give us an overview- So if you want to just give us an overview of why you're interested, there's a perfect segue into what we just left here, why you would like to be in emergency management, what got you interested in it, and how you'd like to serve. They seem to have a really good track record on attracting volunteers, so if you could do that, that would be great.
Sure. I, I first started with some sheltering over at OEM, and I met everybody there and, and saw what they were doing for the city, and I really thought that I wanted to be a part of that. So then I started helping with the lunch program. And that ended, and I just wanted to continue to serve your city.
About a little bit of your background, what you've done in, in, you know, in the past, or what you're doing for a job now, or just a little bit.
Sure. I am coming out of my own retirement after about 20 years, and I am working in a, in a business office and learning a little research in recruiting. So I'm just starting back out, and, and that's about it. I stayed home and raised kids, and then, then a grandchild. So that's why I was pretty much gone out of life for a little while. I just want to get back in, want to help people, get a great city.
Great, great. Well, we certainly appreciate you offering your services and your time. I know the two sitting next to you are pretty dedicated employees of, in a sense, I won't, I shouldn't say employees, you're volunteers, but you might as well be employees, I guess, you know, and well-recognized in, in emergency management, so you've got a, a good pair to, to kind of give you direction.
Yes, ma'am.
I will go to other members. Do you want to start now, Mr. President?
Yeah, it's just going to be any minute now, it's going to, any second now, it'll be seven, so why don't we wait just a moment to open the meeting, and then we'll recess and get to the questions. Okay. If you'd please rise and join me in the salute to the flag.
We salute the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and indivisible in just our law.
Okay, we'll begin with call of the roll. Attendants this evening, starting with Counselor Frida.
Present.
Counselor Dabrowski.
Present.
Counselor Schalfo-Zephyr.
Present.
Counselor Angelini.
Present.
Counselor Odenjro will be noted as absent. Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Present.
Counselor David Cormier.
Present.
And I will be recorded as present. We have seven councilors present. Does the Chairman of Records have a report?
Yes, Mr. President, and I've reviewed the minutes of July 26, 2021, and find them to be in order, unless there's any, any comments or questions asked, that they be placed on file.
Very well, that may be done. At this point, I would entertain a motion to go into recess. Counselor Schalfo-Zephyr, Counselor Angelini, seconds. All in favor, please recognize the usual manner. We are in recess. Counselor Frida, you can pick it up.
All right. Let me go to members of my committee for us, see if you have any questions. Counselor Dabrowski?
No, I don't have any questions. Just want to thank you for volunteering and wish you the best.
You're very welcome.
I know that, that lunch program is a great, is a great program. I hear a lot of, I hear a lot of good things about it, but-
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Cormier?
Thank you very much. I don't have any questions either. I just want to thank you very much for all that you have done and what you will continue to do. And I certainly look forward to your confirmation this evening. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Now, I know, I'm going to just read this into the record, what Mr. LaBlanc sent forward to the, to the mayor's office. Dear Mayor Mazarello, with this letter, I'm requesting the appointment of one new volunteer to the Office of Emergency Management. Eileen Ramsden, 110 Cove Road, Lunenburg. Eileen would like to join our operations unit. She came to our organization through Salvation Army and wanted to volunteer here due to the COVID-19 virus. She's been part of our food delivery program and supported this program through, to its completion in June 2021. She is and will continue to be a great asset to emergency management in our community, and our community. We cannot wait to have her continued support. Eileen has been interviewed by Jim and our volunteer directors. Corey has been run, and no court records are found. Thank you for consideration for this request. So you come highly recommended from Director LaBlanc, and I know Valerie was involved with the food program, and Paul as well. I won't talk about how long I've known Paul before, before he could speak, and that was, that was a long time ago. So I'm, will welcome you, and if there are no other further questions, do you have any questions?
No questions, Counselor.
No further questions. We look forward to voting in support tonight, and we'll, I'll ask the council president to bring it up to the front of the agenda so that you don't have to sit through the whole meeting. We'll, we'll do it right away.
Very good. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Frida. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on a matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and addresses, along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions, however, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address the City Council on an agenda item this evening? And a second time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the City Council on an agenda item this evening? And a third and final time, is there any member of the public wishes to address the City Council on an agenda item this evening? Seeing none, I will declare the public forum closed, and we are back in session. Starting with communications from the mayor, C-05.
C-05, Dean J. Mazarello, Mayor, requested an appropriation of $36,000 be made to the collective bargaining contract services account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund regarding salary study.
C-5 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Moving on to C-06.
C-06, Dean J. Mazarello, Mayor, requested an appropriation of $26,000 be made to the Building Department Capital Outlay Expense Account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund regarding Building Department Truck.
C-6 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
First time on the calendar, regular course.
Regular course may be done. Moving on to C-7.
C-7, Dean J. Mazarello, Mayor, requested an appropriation of $78,000 be made to the Gallagher Building Salary and Wages Account, the same amount to be transferred from the Gallagher Building Revolving Fund regarding maintenance salaries.
C-7 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
First time on the calendar, regular course.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. C-7 has been given regular course. C-8.
C-8, Dean J. Mazarello, Mayor, requested an appropriation of $50,000 be made to the Assistant Comptroller Salaries and Wages Account, same amount to be transferred from the current year revenues regarding position that was excluded from the original budget.
C-8 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
First time on the calendar, Mr. President, regular course.
Very well, C-8 has been given regular course. Counselor Schalfo-Zephyr?
I have a question, well, it's more of a request. And this would be for C-8 through C-12. All of these transfers are being made out of current year revenues, but don't they have to come out of a specific line item? There, I mean, there is no pot of money called current year revenues.
Yeah, I'm going, I'm going to inquire. I've never seen that on an agenda, so I'll inquire what, you know, where, where it's coming from and what they mean by that.
Okay, good, thank you. And that's C-8 through C-12.
Right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor Schalfo-Zephyr. I think we were on C-9, right? We're about to read.
C-9, Dean J. Mazarello, Mayor, requested an appropriation of $9,135 be made to the Highway Labor on Call Coverage Account, the same amount to be transferred from current year revenues regarding position that was excluded from the original budget.
C-9 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
First time on the calendar, regular course.
Very well, C-9 has been given regular course. C-10.
C-10, Dean J. Mazarello, Mayor, requested an appropriation of $2,000 be made to the Recording Secretary's Stipend, the same amount to be transferred from current year revenues regarding position that was excluded from the planning board budget.
C-10 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Once again, first time on the calendar, regular course.
Very well, C-10 has been given regular course. C-11.
C-11, Dean J. Mazarello, Mayor, requested an appropriation of $8,200 be made to the Planning Board Members Account, the same amount to be transferred from the current year revenue, revenues regarding positions that were excluded from the budget.
C-11 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Regular course.
Very well, C-11 has been given regular course. C-12.
C-12, Dean J. Mazarello, Mayor, requested an appropriation of $2,900 be made to the Conservation Board Members Account, the same amount to be transferred from current year revenues regarding positions that was excluded from the budget, excluded from the budget, excuse me.
C-12 has been referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Regular course.
C-12 has been given regular course. Moving on to C-13.
C-13, Dean J. Mazarello, Mayor, requested an appropriation of $42,953.13 be made to the Bulletproof Vest Fund, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund regarding Bulletproof Vest Program.
C-13 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Once again, Mr. President, first time on the calendar, regular course.
Very well, C-13 has been given regular for, course. Moving on to matters before the City Council, starting with the financial report.
Thank you, Mr. President. We began the fiscal year on July 1, 2021, with $19,904,602.80 pending what we've already spent, plus the two items that are on there for the first time tonight, if they are passed at the next meeting, or eventually, we will have spent $107,253.13, which will leave us a balance of $19,797,349.69, and sorry, $67.00. That is a financial report.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, Counselor Frida, if you'd like to move the Ways and Means appointment.
I would.
Do you have a report?
Dean J. Mazarello, Mayor, request the appointment of Eileen Ramsden, 110 Cove Road, Lunenburg, Mass, to the Office of Emergency Management. You've heard the, Counsel heard the interview tonight, and I will go to members of my committee to get their opinion. My opinion would be to confirm the appointment. Go to Counselor Dabrowski.
I agree.
Counselor Cormier?
I also agree.
Okay, Mr. President, we have unanimous decision of the unanimous recommendation of the Ways Subcommittee, Ways and Means Subcommittee.
Very well. You've heard unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to confirm the appointment of Eileen Ramsden to the Office of Emergency Management. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call vote, starting with Counselor Frida.
Yay.
Counselor Dabrowski.
Yay.
Counselor Schalfo-Zephyr.
Yay.
Counselor Angelini.
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier.
Yay.
I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of seven to zero. The appointment of Eileen Ramsden to the Office of Emergency Management has been confirmed. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, back to finance, and C-3. Is the Chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-03, Dean J. Mazarello, Mayor, requested an appropriation of $298,455.60 be made to the School Department Expense Account, the same amount to be raised from fiscal year 2022 revenue. This is regarding an estimate of the fiscal year 2022 E-rate revenue. Obviously, this is customary. We, we do this every year. This is the city's, an estimate of the city's portion that they're going to get for, for E-rate money, which is for access to telecommunications and internet services. So obviously, you know, the city will collect that throughout the year, but for now, they're giving it, forwarding it in this appropriation to the schools so that they can have this money at their disposal. So it would be my recommendation that we grant C-03, and I'll ask that you check with members of my committee.
Very well. Counselor Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
Counselor Angelini.
I agree as well.
You've heard unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-3. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-3, please recognize the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to zero, C-3 has been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $298,455.60 be made to the School Department Expense Account, the same amount to be raised by fiscal year 2022 revenue. This is once again regarding the estimate of the fiscal year 2022 E-rate revenue. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please say yay.
Yay.
Anyone opposed, by a vote of seven to zero, the order has been adopted. Moving on to legal affairs. Is the Chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Petition 75-21, Elizabeth Wood, on behalf of the Planning Board, requests to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the regulation of dumpster location and screening. We have a public hearing that's been continued to August 23, 2021, at 6:45 PM. I would request further time. I'd ask you to poll my committee, and also just request that the clerk make sure we get those outstanding referrals.
I'll remind him.
Thank you.
Very well. Counselor Schalfo-Zephyr?
I agree.
Counselor David Cormier?
I also agree.
You heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to give 75-21 further time. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting 75-21 further time, please recognize the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to zero, 75-21 has been given further time. Moving on to Ways and Means and the additional item that is left, is the chairwoman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. Dean J. Mazarello, Mayor, requests that the list of election offices for August 31, 2021 to August 31, 2022, be appointed. I would trust that everyone's had an opportunity to look over the list, and if the clerk has had no input from anyone, or any changes or concerns about any of the appointments.
I've put everybody on who keeps requesting to be a worker. I don't let workers go easily.
Okay, so going to members of my committee, Counselor Dabrowski?
I agree.
Counselor Cormier?
I also agree.
Okay, so the unanimous recommendation is to approve, confirm the list.
Very well. Thank you for the unanimous recommendation from your Subcommittee. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call. Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dabrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Schalfo-Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay. C-4 has been, or the appointments represented by C-4 have been confirmed. Moving on to new business and the first reading of an ordinance, is the Chairman of Legal Affairs ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Petition 2-22, Mark C. Bedanza, City Council President, request to amend Section 2-16 of Article III of the Revised Ordinances for the City of Lemonster. The ray line replacing, quote, "No meeting shall be held during the week of Christmas", end quote, with, quote, "No meeting shall be held on the fourth Monday of December", end quote. My recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Very well. Counselor Schalfo-Zephyr?
I agree.
Counselor David Cormier?
I haven't seen, have we gotten those back? I haven't seen, I, I don't have so much of a problem with this one. I think it's pretty straightforward, but I haven't seen any of these in final ordinance form yet. They haven't been, they haven't come back.
You haven't gotten them back yet?
I'll remind Mr. Riley a third time.
Okay. Okay, so any other discussion on 2-22? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor, this will be by roll, well, this will be by roll call, starting with Councilor Frida.
I think, did I say yay? Okay. I'll say it again.
Okay, I'm sorry. Councilor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Councilor Schalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Councilor Angelini?
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of 7 to 0. First reading is granted on 2-22. So the clerk is advising, we don't have the actual final form on 3-22, 4-22, or 5-22? Councilor Dombrowski, bearing that in mind, do you want to, in block, give these further time, or what do you want to, what do you want to do?
I mean, I, I'll do some quick Subcommittee work, if you don't mind.
Okay, that's fine.
I mean, we do have a second reading of the ordinance, where, you know, if there are problems, we can bring it up at that time. I consider these to be fairly wrote, but, you know, if other people do want to see it before they vote, I certainly understand that. So I would just ask how people feel about it.
I'm fine with voting on these.
Okay.
As they are, because we do get the opportunity to look at the final language during the second reading.
Okay.
I might add, they're not even legally required. They're formalities, and it's a custom that Lemus is always done, but it's not legally required.
Whatever your call is, I mean, I know you authored several of them, so...
I think they were, I personally submitted them in what I consider ordinance form, so I don't expect them to come back with any big changes at all, and we do have an opportunity to, you know, to address any issues in the second reading, so I'll move forward with them as well. It's fine.
All right. Thank you for your committee work, Councilor.
Yep, no problem. So...
I'll hear your report on 3-22.
Sure. Petition 3-22, City Council Vice President David R. Cormier, requests to amend Section 2-15 for election of President by deleting the current language and inserting a new provision specifically regulating the succession of the office of President should a vacancy in the office occur. My position is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance, and I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Very well. Councilor Schalfo Zephyr?
I agree.
Councilor David Cormier?
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to grant the first reading of 3-22. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call. Councilor Frida?
Yay.
Councilor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Councilor Schalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Councilor Angelini?
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of 7 to 0. The first reading of 3-22 has been granted. Moving on to 4-22.
Thank you, Mr. President. Petition 4-22, City Council Vice President David R. Cormier, requests to amend Section 2-15-1 for election of Vice President by inserting a new provision specifically regulating the succession of the office of the Vice President should a vacancy in the office occur. My position is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance, and I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Very well. Councilor Schalfo Zephyr?
I agree.
And Councilor David Cormier?
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs to grant the first reading of the ordinance. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call. Councilor Frida?
Yay.
Councilor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Councilor Schalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Councilor Angelini?
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of 7 to 0. The first reading of 4-22 has been adopted. Moving on to 5-22, is the Chairman ready to report?
I am. Petition 5-22, City Council Vice President David R. Cormier, requests to amend Chapter 13, Article III, Division 2, Sections 13-34, "No parking on certain streets," and add the following, "Grant Street northerly side from 176 to 222 Grant Street," and "Grant Street southerly side from 179 to 221 Grant Street." My recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance, and I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Councilor Schalfo Zephyr?
I agree.
And Councilor David Cormier?
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to grant the first reading of 5-22. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call. Councilor Frida?
Yay.
Councilor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Councilor Schalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Councilor Angelini?
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of 7 to 0. The first reading of 5-22 has been granted. Moving on to Old Business. Any Old Business before the council? Seeing none, Community Calendar? Councilor Frida?
It's actually not new community calendar stuff, but I just wanted to mention a couple things.
Sure.
Yesterday, there was a celebration of life at the Eagles for gentleman Cello Chaconi, and it was, who's suffering from ALS. Many, many people know Cello and have respected him as a businessman in the community. Over 1,000 tickets were sold. It was, it was very carefully done so that it was not a danger to COVID. It was all outside, and it was totally spread out. I just think there's, it's raised a lot of money for ALS. It was donated to the compassionate care for ALS, and I just think Bill and Kim Brady and Wayne and Tracy Borghardt, I think, were part of spearheading it, with a number of many other people that, I'm not sure all of them, so I'm not going to mention any names, but, you know, the Eagles as well. And I think it just, I kind of looked around yesterday, and I kind of had a different appreciation for the Eagles, because if we didn't have the Eagles and what they stand for and what they serve, there'd be very limited availability to have any type of a large function. I mean, they've got the property, they've got a beautiful site there, and their members went out of their way to make this very professional and very well-done for Cello yesterday. He was there, and he was very happy, and I just think it was a good cause all the way around. And on a sad note, I just wanted to bring up someone else that we lost in the community. Not a lot of people knew her, I don't think, but she served on many, she just loved veterans and loved anything to do with veterans. Her husband was a POW, and had, had just a phenomenal personality in terms of helping some of the younger veterans that, that he would speak with, and she was just right there for all veterans and Blue Stom others and a lot of people, and, you know, was the sidekick to Helen Hill and May Tabora will be, will be seriously missed. I mean, I kind of drove her around a few times with, with some of the others, and she's just, she was just a real sweetheart.